Okay, everybody ready?
Yes.
Good evening, it's 6 o'clock on Tuesday, December 2nd. I'm calling to order the Placerville Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Please call the roll.
Good evening, Chair Keeney.
Here.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Here.
Commissioner Sylvester. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Stratton.
Here.
Okay, full house. Welcome, everyone. We have no closed sessions tonight. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by General Consent unless any Commissioner requests a roll, call, or vote, or unless any member of the Commission, staff, or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. Would anyone here like to pull the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, October 21st? Oh, I thought she was getting out to go to the podium.
Not podium.
Anyone want to pull the minutes?
I would.
Okay, so we'll pull the minutes from the Consent Calendar, and then we'll move on to number five to discuss the minutes. So I'll turn it over to you, Catherine.
It's a very minor thing, but Sylvester was misspelled in the agenda. I don't know if that's worth pulling for.
My—
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, on the—
No, in the meeting minutes.
Oh, I see, I see, with a Y. Okay, so for the meeting minutes, there we go. Oh, I see. So typo there to—for the misspelling?
It's multiple places. Do you want me to list them? It's everywhere that Sylvester shows up, other than—
Continued items, yes. So, oh, and then one more under 12.2. So I see one, two, three places? Okay. So any other comments on the meeting minutes from October 21st? Okay. Can we have a motion to adopt the amended minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Have to do—enter that into spell check, I guess, so that we don't have that error again. I noticed—anyway, I noticed the change when—as soon as you brought it to my attention. So number six is Items of Interest to the Public and Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. State law prohibits the Commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the Planning Commission under specified circumstances. Would anyone in the public care to comment? Good evening. If you would, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Ryan Carter. As this year draws to a close, I just wanted to come up and say thank you, give you guys a personal thank you for—I know how hard you work, I know how much time you spend at this job, and you guys do a lot to keep this city beautiful, and we appreciate you. And I just wanted to wish you guys all a Merry Christmas. Have a great year.
Thank you. Very nice, Ryan. I appreciate that. Anyone else care to comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Written communications on non-agenda items? We have none, and we do not have any presentations or educational workshops tonight, nor do we have any environmental assessments or public hearings. So our agenda tonight is focused on—we'll move on down to item 12, which is—wait. So that—is item 12, Staff Reports. And tonight, under Staff Reports—bear with me—12.2.1. Okay. We have—the subject is the adoption of revised Planning Commission bylaws. And so I think, as everyone's aware, we have reviewed the bylaws, updated them, and what we have before us tonight are corrected bylaws, and there are a couple of suggestions from staff in the staff report. So I'll turn it over to Director of Development Services Carol Kendrick for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The last time these bylaws were updated were in 2021. There was a revision by the City Attorney, and I believe the Planning Commission looked at those or had some input in 2023, but those never got adopted. And that was to particularly identify some clerical errors, outdated references, incomplete sentences, formatting inconsistencies, and minor procedural clarifications that warrant correction. There are a few changes that staff is recommending is going to one meeting a month and changing the time to 5:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM. There was an error in the staff report showing Monday as the date, and that's—that is an error. And so we have revised red lines and a clean set—I have clean sets here—of the updates that were left on the dais for the Planning Commission. That includes some formatting corrections suggested by Vice Chair Lepper. And we put the reasons why—for reducing it to one meeting a month, just based on a two-year average, we're canceling about 43% of our meetings. And due to time constraints, just with the resources that we have, it's probably easier to schedule a special meeting if we have projects that need to go, or there's any kind of timeline, is just scheduling a special meeting and then having just our one regular meeting a month. But our intention is not to hold up any projects, but just to kind of streamline it a little bit more. And so that is staff suggestion. So again, you have a revised red line, and then I have a clean set that maybe Dina can pass out, I'm sorry, and available to answer any questions you may have.
—tonight, and it shows 5:00 PM Tuesday, first Tuesday of each month.
Yes. One is a red line, one's a clean, just for ease.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Does that—do you have anything else for your staff—in your staff report? Just this updated copy that we were handed?
Okay. That might be something Dina passed out, as I think we were both trying to cover bases. There was a question on the parliamentary procedure. One of the things that the City Attorney mentioned is the current bylaws reference Roberts rules. However, in practice, the Commission has operated very informally and really needed formal parliamentary procedure. The Commission may want to consider simpler alternatives that better reflect the actual practice, which could be Rosenberg's Rules of Orders, a fully informal approach in which the Chair decides procedural questions, subject to override by majority vote, and the primary draft, Attachment A retains Roberts' rules and alternate versions using Rosenberg's rules. Or the informal approach can be provided upon request. But I did provide attachments that kind of show the difference between the Rosenberg's and the Roberts' Rules of Order. So that's something that the Commission may want to consider.
And that—I'm sorry, so the comparison of Roberts and Rosenberg's is—
Attachment D.
Attachment C. Okay, thank you. And then, anything else from the staff report? Anything else in the staff report?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Chair. That concludes my present—now concludes my presentation. I'm happy to—
All right. I think we're all trying to make sure we've got these different copies. So just to review, we do have—we have two copies, Attachment A and B, in our packet, and then tonight we were handed a new attachment and then a red line version. And then, how does—what we were given, how does that differ from what Dina just handed us?
For the revisions, it is a couple formatting and grammar changes that were suggested by Vice Chair Lepper, and then changing Monday to Tuesday. So it's just their minor grammar and formatting.
So this is the final proposed—what we just were handed is the final proposed—updated—okay.
Yep. A red lined and a clean version.
Okay, includes a red line. Okay, thank you. Now, open it up for Commissioners who have technical questions about the staff report? Go ahead.
I just have a small question, but first of all, thank you for incorporating. I submitted via email just some very small comma, semicolon, word insertions, just cleaning up for consistency. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time to look at that and incorporate it. My only question about the new meeting schedule is if we have any concerns about applicants being able to be here at the 5:00 hour for public hearings. Has that, in your experience, been an issue? We move pretty quickly usually through the first part of our agenda and land at the public hearings pretty early. Do you foresee anything—I'm totally down with starting it earlier, but I was wondering, like, would 5:30 be more appropriate, or do you think the 5:00 is appropriate for applicants?
I've seen it different in different jurisdictions where Planning Commission starts at 6:00, but also a City Council starts at 6:00. So it doesn't—I haven't heard anything, but I haven't been here that long, about citizens having concerns of getting to City Council in time to participate. So we were—I was just suggesting that we keep it consistent, but if there's a concern, we can always do 5:30, or we can leave it at 6:00.
I just—I had a little bit of a harder time engaging with City Council when it started at 5:00, but I'm not against even potentially trying the 5:00 and seeing if that raises any issues. I know we've just talked a lot about applicants being here as being very important for us in person versus, like, in City Council, you can kind of submit things in writing—I mean, you can do that here. But as far as applications, I just wanted to make sure that that was going to keep our meetings accessible for people getting off work, things like that. I'm definitely in favor if we wanted to move it back even to 5:30, but that was the only thing that kind of, like, came up to me when I saw the 5:00 PM start time.
Okay. Anyone else have a question, technical question about the staff report? Yes, Carol?
As someone who watches the City Council for a long time, I noticed that when they changed it to earlier, it was because they had a mayor at the time who run on and on and on. The meetings tended to be going on till late in the night. That's why they moved it up to 5:00. So if we had it 5:30, we'd be able to accommodate both kind of constituencies. That's—my preference is 5:30, just because we want to always make it possible for the public to come participate.
Whatever the Commission's pleasure is, we will add—
All right. Any other technical questions about the bylaws or questions?
I do have a couple of questions, actually.
Oh, go ahead.
Don't know why they didn't pop into my mind. On Article 5, Sections E and F, they both refer to a development technician and have kind of similar roles. Is there a reason why they're separated?
So we don't have a recording secretary, so Dina is our development technician. And so I think it's confusing when the bylaws are suggesting a position that technically doesn't exist in the city.
Okay. And then, let's see, what was the other one? Towards the end, Article 10, the changes to Section F. I was just confused why there was a period added to 3 and not the others. I don't know if there's a technical reason for that.
Article 10—
Section F, F3. I saw that there was, like, an underlined period added to the end, and I was just curious if that has a purpose compared to not having it on the other ones.
Was Article 10, I'm sorry, A?
F3.
We can delete that for consistency.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question, but I'm just trying to find it here in my notes. But we can look at Article 10, F4. So that says, "The Commission acts to recommend approval, conditional approval, or denial to the City Council." And I remember that earlier—oh, here it is. Article 8, Voting, Item C. Oh, I thought that that had been removed. So, oh, yeah, there's a red line that removed that if the Planning Commission is approved or denied, the application will automatically be forwarded to the City Council. So is that not the case, or is that only because that was how the bylaws were written?
Typically, if it fails or it's—in the event of a formal application failing to be either approved or denied, the Commission—the application will be considered denied, so—
And so then, once the Planning Commission denies an application, the way that this is written in Article 10, it suggests that it automatically moves on to City Council, and I think that that was what was trying to be corrected. So I just wanted to understand if—if that's actually—if I'm understanding that correctly, or if that is—that process is the result of the way that the bylaws are written? Is that something that we have discretion in revising?
Well, you have discretion in revising the bylaws, but 10F4 recommend approval, conditional approval, or denial to the City Council, so—because there are some items that are legislative where you're just making recommendations—
Right.
There are some that are quasi-judicial, that you're the final—
I see.
—decision-maker, so—
Maybe that just needs some clarification.
Correct, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I have a question. Where does it say that it automatically goes to City Council?
It used to. Well, no, it's—
So it used to say it in Article 8, Voting, Section C. It used to say, "In the event of a formal application failing to be either approved or denied by the Planning Commission, the application will automatically be forwarded to the City Council for action."
Okay.
And that's been suggested to be revised. However, in Article 10, the way I read it, that same type of language was retained. And so my question was just that—well, if that's something—I guess—I guess—
To it?
Right. And if it's something that we can clarify, or, you know—so I think I understand better now. So if it's legislative, obviously, well, we wouldn't deny it, we would—we would make our recommendation to City Council—
To City Council, for what they—we think they should do.
Right. And in other cases, it would be an actual denial.
Yeah, I took pause on that one, too, but I interpreted it the way Carol just said, that sometimes we make a decision on an application, and sometimes we make recommendations to City Council on what we think their actions should be based on our review. So I kind of took them as, like, this one's maybe a public hearing—
Two separate situations.
Yeah. And this one, like, a different topic that needs to be—I think—I think that one's just still a little messy in general, but I don't—
I think so, too.
Yeah. Because I had also had a question on that one about including the word "continue" in Number 3, because to me, the attorney said it's duplicative to have "continue" in Number 1 and Number 3. But I interpreted those as also two different things. So "close" or "continue" the hearing. My example for that, in my memory, would be, like, that sign one that we got, where we did not discuss it because the applicant hadn't come, they weren't ready. So we didn't even discuss the application, we just moved to continue it. And in my mind, Number 3 should have the word "continue" there as well, because that's one of the options we do once we discuss.
Oh, wait, Number 1?
Number 1, to me is—
Close or continue?
Yes. And that, to me, is a different kind of continuing than discussing it and then having—making the action to approve, conditionally approve, continue, or deny after our discussion. So, like, we talk about it, and we go, you know what? Like the ARCO, we need to continue this because we want some more information, or we want a change in the application. I'm not—I don't think it's, like, a hill to die on—
I didn't read this as a—you know, a time constraint. We do 1, 2, 3, and then 4. But you are reading it that way?
I don't know, and that was just my interpretation—that I thought—it was—when I read the attorney's feedback on there, I didn't see it as duplicative, but I also don't think that it's anything—I just think it removes that option for us in that line to discuss an application and then make a decision to—
What staff—you understand in the dilemma. What's your comment on that?
I do. So, I mean, I think that there could be two instances. So for F1, you could close or continue the item without any discussion. Or for 3, that is after you've had your discussion and deliberations, that you continue it. So I kind of get the argument there and would agree that that would be an option. So we—I would—it makes sense to me having it remain in there.
To put into F3, add the option to continue. Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, I didn't—I saw the attorney's feedback. I'm not an attorney, so I—you know, I always try to intend to err on that they know what they're talking about, but it doesn't quite sit right to me that we don't have an option—
And we read things in plain language, as opposed to—the attorneys want things to be very concise and not overly—
Yeah. And I didn't interpret it as duplicative. I interpreted it as two different actions, like, "They're not here," or "We don't have enough info, we're not even going to talk about this, we're just continuing." And then the other option being, we discussed it, we decided to either approve as is, conditionally approve with whatever updates we make, continue it after discussion, or deny it.
Okay.
I see. I understand the way this section is set up better now. Thanks, yeah.
I had a question about Article 6 Committees. This hasn't come up very often, just when we had our historical group, the Special Committee. The reading of A, "When desirable and necessary, the Chair with approval of the Planning of the Commission shall appoint standing committees." And what we have—we have not appointed a standing committee, at least in my experience with this Commission. We did have the ad hoc Special Committee that did the research on the historical districts. The way I read A, the second sentence, "The Chair may appoint advisory or ad hoc committees as appropriate, and then advisory or ad hoc committees shall be discharged at the end of their assignment." To me, the ad hoc committee is—it's different than a standing committee, and we had this had a long discussion at the time of forming, that we began to use the language "standing committee," but then we realized that that then invokes things like the Brown Act, where you cannot have—you know, you have to have public scrutiny, and it would put a burden, more of a burden, on staff to track, post-track, advertise all of the work of a standing committee, whereas the Special Committee had the flexibility to meet, you know, away from the regular meeting, and then write their report as a summary and present it in then public session. So I remember at the time, I struggled with this—the language here in Article 6. So the way I read that, it's just, as I said, that second sentence really should be under 6B. It talks about ad hoc, which we called—we called it a Special Committee, and I believe we were told that that's the same, an ad hoc and a special, as opposed to the standing committee. So I—I just picked this up this afternoon, reread this, and I apologize for not bringing it to staff's attention before, but I think that that's an important wording change that we need to discuss under Article 6. Comment from staff?
No, that makes sense, and that's my familiar—familiar ale—that's how I'm familiar with—
Ad hoc and special are the same, as opposed to standing, which is a different—
I agree with that.
Ongoing.
Would—just striking, "Shall appoint standing committees and the Chair"—so, "When desirable or necessary, the Chair with the approval of the Commission may appoint advisory or ad hoc committees as appropriate?"
I don't know that the Chair has to have the approval of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, we did vote on the last—the only one I've been present to, we voted on, so I don't know—
We did. And so I'm wondering if that was not the right process, that the Chair has the flexibility to announce it and then, you know, solicit participation. But it's—and that's the way I remember reading it at the time, that the Chair had the authority to do that, as opposed to the ad hoc committee, which comes under, you know, different rules and regulations. So I think that deserves more discussion as well.
I think the discussion I'd offer is that—
I'd rather not get into discussion. Let's wait for public comment, and then let's discuss this as a body after we take public comment. So at this point, I'd like to just take technical changes that we need to discuss.
Let me offer some technical changes. One is, we know what Special Committee and Ad hoc Committee mean. They mean the same thing. But Standing Committee is not defined. I don't think anybody has said—
Oh, actually, it is. You may not recall that when we formed the—our Special Committee. But we had a thorough discussion of what a Standing Committee is.
What is a Standing Committee?
Standing Committee requires—well, I'm sure staff can address this more thoroughly than I can, but at the time, our director indicated that this was—a Standing Committee is just that. It is ongoing, and membership could change, and it requires—it puts more of a burden on staff to, as I said, track, report, and follow the activities of a Standing Committee. So there's more flexibility with the Special—
The ad hoc or Special Committee was only two persons. So under the Brown Act, it didn't require all these notice requirements.
Exactly.
So that's why there was no extra burden described.
Exactly. So that's what I want to clarify. So we're on the same page with this.
Okay.
Good. Any other technical questions for staff? Or any other things that—I'd like to bring these forward for the public to comment on, and then we'll bring all this back for thorough discussion among the Commission members. But at this point, any other things you'd like to—okay, great. So we'll do just that. Any other comments from staff?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we will open it up for public comment on the proposed changes to our bylaws. Good evening. If you would, please state— If you would, please state your name for the record.
Good evening. So I just got this copy of bylaws with yellow on it. So there was a, a mention that there might be a problem, like they have a peak going on right now where they, they lose a chair, lose an officer, and then they can't replace them until March, early March is what the bylaws say now. So I was wondering about adding a sentence, just a line after the election of officers, Section Five.
So section.
Small letter B.
Five, B.
Where it says, "Elections after March 1st." And maybe just add, "Or at any time as called by a quorum of the PC." And then if you needed to seat a new officer, you would be covered, you wouldn't have to wait till March 1st.
Okay.
Because I saw in, in the notes in the binder that there was that potential problem of, of not being able to reseat a new officer as needed, like if the, the planning commission goes down to four members or whatever happens. The con, the difference between Roberts' Rules of Order and Rosenberg's, the, I don't like in Rosenberg's that there's no second to a motion. So if you were leaning towards adopting Rosenberg's for efficiency, I think you could adopt your own hybrid where you require a second to a motion. We adopt Rosenberg's, but we're adding a requirement for a second to a motion. Article Four, I think instead of calling it City Council Chambers, because this building is far more than just that, and if you Google search it, you're not going to find it, it should just be called Town Hall. And it has the address, I believe. Section Four. What letter? Change it to this date. Oh, a small letter A. Article Four, small letter A. "When either date falls on a legal holiday," blah, blah, blah. Just, would it be better to say, "When this date," as in the meeting date, "falls on a legal holiday"? I don't know why "either" is in there, but it's just a. And then a question on where the city attorney is, the planning commission attorney. It doesn't really, it says, basically, the planning commission can request the city attorney to attend the meetings. But what triggers that? I mean, is there a vote? It doesn't, it's kind of silent on that. So does one member say, "I would like the city attorney here," or do you take a vote? Just a question. You should probably clarify that. It's.
Where is it?
I remember seeing it. For its sake of finding it easily.
I didn't write down what section, but it's.
I can look through. I just, I remember seeing it, I just don't know where it was.
Oh, Article 11, other. D, small letter D. The city attorney is the attorney for the planning commission. And just clarify, "Will attend upon request." What's the trigger? I think this was mentioned as a cleanup. Article 10, F, "A deny or a tie vote is no action," so a denial. And I believe that means that that item cannot come back for one year unless, I guess, it's appealed to City Council and a different result happens there. So that's just a question for staff to clarify that in my mind, if a denial here at commission is a one-year ban. I don't think that's under your purview, but I think it's City Code. And then I wrote down, under Section 8C, to remove the word "either." I guess I must not like that word. 8C. "In the event of a formal application failing to be either approved or denied," seemed a little excessive. It's either approved or denied, because like, four members, a two-two vote, that's a tie, that's a denial. So I'm kind of lost at where you would have a limbo vote, right? Seems to me you either have approval or a denial. Cut and dry. So failing to be either approved or denied.
So if the vote is a tie.
Yeah.
As opposed to an outright denial, like a, you know, losing vote, one to three, as opposed to three to one, but if two-two.
So does it say somewhere?
A tie is a denial.
Tie vote is a denial? Thought I saw it somewhere.
I think it's that, right there.
Or it's a recommendation.
And that's so.
From the attorney. I believe it was in that one.
In Article Seven, small B. It's in yellow. I always would like to have a total quorum and add for the item at hand, because sometimes you'll start an item, someone will recuse. I think it might be covered, because then you would, I don't think you could have two members with an item and take action on it. You have to have a quorum of the body, so you would have to have three. It might not be needed, but I always thought. Am I right? You can't have a quorum of two for an item.
Okay.
Always have to have three. All right, so never mind on that. And then on Article Seven, small G. I agree. It's not the right. It's where you have to have five, a full five votes for bylaws and election of officers. And I think, I would like to see it strike for the election of the officers that will cover that if you lose a member, but keep it five votes required for bylaws.
Okay.
So just some thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments from the public on the proposed changes of the bylaws? I'm seeing a shaking head. All right. We'll close the public comment portion. First, I'd like to turn it over to, or ask you, Ms. Kendrick, do you have any comments about the city attorney presence? I think that was, that's a significant one for us to consider, so. Because it's expensive to have them, and we normally don't have a city attorney present. So whose request, would we have to send a request through City Council so that we have budget to pay for a city attorney?
That's something I'd probably like to follow up with the city manager. I've worked in jurisdictions where we didn't have a city attorney present, but if there was a controversial item, say, you know, something that we know that is, you know, potentially going to have some legal issues, we would request the city attorney be present.
Staff would request.
Staff would request that, but it's, let me talk with the city manager and kind of get his, his feel on that, because, yeah, there, there is a significant cost.
Yes.
Involved, and so.
Okay, I think that might be a good way to clarify that. And I think those, that was the only one, actually, from the comments we received from Mr. Drobisch, that I wanted to hear from staff on that, because it is expensive. So let's bring it back to commissioners for, actually, I, I happen to read the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and they're very clear on the process, and I think at this, this time, I'd, I would entertain a motion to take action on these bylaws. So is anyone prepared to make a motion at this time? And then we would open up for discussion.
Oh, I just have one more question about the public comment. To have staff look into, and that was the comment regarding when an application can come back. I don't, it doesn't make sense to me that it's a year, just because they can appeal that denial to City Council, correct? If we deny something?
Yes. So they do have the right to appeal, but they couldn't reapply for a year. I can confirm that by checking in the code, but that's consistent with what I've seen with other California cities, is you have to wait a year before you resubmit, but they do have the opportunity to appeal their decision.
Denial. But then my other question would be, if they tweak the application, is it a new application? You know? We say no to this, and then you come back with like a slight change, does that, it just popped into my head, so I don't know that it needs to be spelled out here, but that just.
I, I've seen, I've seen that. I had a project that was denied by Planning Commission, appealed to City Council, the City Council upheld the denial, and the applicant significantly changed the project by intensifying it, doing an EIR.
Yeah.
You know, instead of a MND. And so I think it just depends on how much they're changing it, you know, if it's truly like an altered project. But I, I have seen that in the past.
Okay. Yeah. That was just, just kind of raised questions. That was the only other one that, besides the city attorney, which I agree should be investigated for who can call, was the application coming back if denied? That's all. Thank you.
Great. So can we get a motion for action? And then we can open for discussion.
So we take a motion on the action to discuss?
No, a motion on what is before us tonight, to take action on these bylaws.
What would we be voting on? If, if you have a motion right now, it would be on.
Whether to accept what's before us?
Mm-hmm.
But then, do we have the opportunity to?
Right. Then we would have the opportunity, absolutely. I think we have fallen into the habit of discussing before we have a motion, and I think it's better governance for us to have a motion that we discuss, and then we work with our amendments, we take our ideas, but we have a motion on, on the floor. And that's what we work with as opposed to doing it backwards. It has been our practice, and I think it's better practice for us to have the motion first, and then we can amend as we need to.
I'll move that we adopt the bylaws that we had previously, and then we can discuss what changes we want to make.
The motion is to discuss, right?
No, the motion would be to adopt bylaws or adopt the modified proposed changes that we have before us. Let's look at the staff report. It is the adoption of the revised Planning Commission bylaws, so that is, that's our agenda item. So any motion, so from what I'm hearing is that, Mr. Smith, you don't like the proposed changes?
I, I'm asking that we propose that we adopt what we have already, and then, as you suggest, we're opening up for discussion. We can go through it one by one. For example, the suggestion made a moment ago about Article Five and use the term.
Okay, so I just, I'm looking for a motion at this point.
It's the same thing as what you're talking about.
Okay.
But you use a different instrument, use the instrument we already have.
I will point out that the recommended Planning Commission action is that, that the Planning Commission adopt by motion the revised Planning Commission bylaws as shown. So that's really, that's what staff has recommended, but, so we have a motion from Mr. Smith to not do that. Do we have a second? Okay, so we don't have a second for that. I would like, I would entertain a motion, or invite you to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation, or add changes to your motion, that perhaps we would have amendments, if you're more comfortable with that. Okay, I see I'm puzzling everybody.
I feel at this time there are further revisions, so I don't feel comfortable making a motion to adopt.
Okay.
Agreed.
Let's revert to form then, and let's just go ahead and discuss it among ourselves. The reason I wanted to do this, I, I did read through the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. I think it's great plain language. I want to thank staff for bringing it to our attention. I didn't know that this was available to us. We've had, you know, we've struggled with Roberts' Rules. I think a lot of organizations do, and I think it's, you know, just this Planning Commission. But the Rosenberg's Rules of Order are based on Roberts' Rules. It's just very, like I said, plain language cuts to the chase. And so what I saw in there is that, again, under good governance, is that you have a motion, and it is under discussion, and then amendments can be made and so on, friendly amendments can be made. But since we're not comfortable with that, let's go ahead, and like I said, let's follow our usual pattern. So I'll start the discussion. I am in favor of the proposed changes and keeping our meetings on the first Tuesday of each month. The time change, let's discuss that. I, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with that for several reasons, but let's see how the rest of you feel about changing the time itself. But one, one meeting a month, that certainly does make sense in light of the analysis that we were provided on the, you know, the number of cancellations and meetings actually held. That does make sense as far as being more efficient and being more cost-effective. That's very important to the city. So I do, I am in favor of that. And as is pointed out, if workload, if we do have something that needs to be expedited, then we go through the special meeting process as needed. And if things pick up and we, you know, need to have more than one meeting a month, then we can revisit that. As I just said, the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, I don't know if the rest of you had a chance to review those, but I'm very much in favor of replacing the Roberts' Rules of Order with the Rosenberg's, just because it is, like I said, plain language. We know how to operate under them and as well as the, the public. So it's not as, I don't know. We, we do run things much more informally than I think Roberts' Rules was written for. We've also identified a few other changes, and so tonight, we could approve those changes, and then we would, what would be the action, Ms. Kendrick? Would you need to run these by the city attorney one more time? Or do you think what you've heard us talk about, we can just make those small changes here and there throughout the bylaws? And, and approve these tonight? Or would we have to review one more revision of the bylaws? What would be our action?
Well, I don't, I, because the changes are minor in nature, I don't believe we need to run it by the city attorney again. But it's up to the Planning Commission's pleasure. We can bring back a clean version based off all the comments we've received today and come back with information that's been requested, or you can approve them, and we've taken notes on all the suggestions, and then, you know, just adopt that and then provide the adopted one at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, those are my preliminary thoughts. Who'd like to go next? Go ahead, Carol.
This is what I wanted to suggest, is we go through them one by one. For example, you just suggested.
This, okay, we can go through them one by one. So let's just do that.
So there, there seems to be agreement that once a month is fine, and that'd be on Tuesday. So we have some consensus there. The next issue was about the time, 5:00, 5:30, or 6:00.
Well, that's, that certainly makes sense. Do the rest of you want to go through it one by one?
I think that's fine. I would like to hear your thoughts on this. I think the start time is an easy one, we can tackle, like you said. So if we want to hash that one out real quick, what time the start time is, I think, like you just said, is a good.
Well, I certainly don't want anything to fall through the cracks. And so what I heard was one by one, and that, that makes sense to me. So I think we could, we'll quickly get to Article Four. So let's, let's, let's do that. So one by one. Article One, any further changes to the language? And let me make sure. And let me make sure I've got, final proposed, okay, so I've got this in front of me. So there's just minor changes in there. Any other changes to Article 1? Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay, Article 2?
No.
Nope, no.
No.
Article 3 is our business address, okay. All right, so now we are at Article 4, just like, so this is a very important one. There is a minor change pointed out by Mr. Drobisch, third line, if the meeting date falls on a legal holiday. I think that's a meaningful change, if we all agree that we are going to have the first Tuesday of each month. So let's take that first. One, one month, meeting a month, is everyone okay with that?
That's fine, and I agreed with the suggestion to change city council chambers to town hall.
I agree, in the first line.
I prefer to leave it city council chambers. If we would happen to move, I think we'll probably always meet wherever city council meets. You know, today we are in town hall.
But this lists the address, so that would need to be updated, too.
Right, so that would be, that, but we would always meet the same place the city council does.
I think that what I heard from Mr. Drobisch that made sense to me is we have the address. What is the address? The address is for what's generally known by everybody as Town Hall. Almost nobody thinks of it as the city council chambers.
Yeah, that's where we sit. We don't meet upstairs, we don't meet, you know, back in the recs apartment. We meet here in the chambers.
This is used for the classes for the city, recreation parks uses, it's used for Parks and Recreation, but it's, it's the one name that everybody would recognize who picks this up somewhere.
Well, let's do both then. Shall be held in the city council chambers, comma, Town Hall, located at 549, because we do sit in, I think it's just a sign of respect, we are in city council. This is the chamber for city council to me, that, that's very important to retain that. But I hear what you're saying, so how about if we just add city council chambers, comma, Town Hall?
Okay, I agree.
Located at 549.
Do you, it's just a matter of grammar, but city hall, city council chambers, comma, in the Town Hall, comma, located at 549 Main Street.
Okay, uh huh. So then, in place, well, starting at 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM. So now our next, I don't know. What do you think? We, I can see it cutting either way, whether this is more or less of an imposition to start at 5:00. Kirk, you said something that city council changed their time to 5:00 to accommodate a member of the city council. How do you feel about public comment?
Those meetings went on really late, all the time. And so that's why they proposed doing it short. But we haven't had that problem with us, except for some extraordinarily rare occasions. So that's why I wasn't sure there was a need...
How do you feel about changing it to 5:00?
I prefer not to, for the reasons that was described before. You got people who are working, they come in. We did have people who were working and came in, and that's an inconvenience for them. So 6:00 seems to be preferred without some compelling reason to change it, and I haven't heard it.
Melissa, how do you feel about?
I also do not prefer 5:00 as someone who works a regular nine to five. I'm okay with the idea of 5:30, however, seeing as we're moving to once a month, that means the meetings could go longer, and that makes it more difficult to, like, eat dinner before we get in, kind of thing. No one wants to see me hangry at 8:00. My preference would be 5:30 or 6:00.
Okay.
And I don't know if we should save this for later, but for Section C of this Article 4, if we are going to be changing the time to earlier, I would also like to see the end time potentially move earlier, because a five-hour meeting, rough.
Oh, okay, well, let's get to that here shortly. Let's determine the time. I'm comfortable, more comfortable with 6:00. I like starting at the top of the hour as opposed to at 5:30, easier for me to remember. Issue of being hangry, so everyone can have a meal, and also, I think, for the, for the folks who show up at our Planning Commission, I know, you know, county holds their Planning Commission meetings during the day, but that's the county. I think for our purposes, it really is more convenient for most of the public to come down after typical work hours. So my preference is to keep it at 6:00. And how do you feel?
I am not in favor of the 5:00 PM, but I'm totally open to the 5:30. I find myself kind of twiddling my thumbs sometimes because I'm like ready, but it's not quite then. So 5:30 to me seems like a happy medium that might get a little less time for staff, like lag time between their day ending and the meetings beginning. But I, like, if that's really burdensome, then I can understand the 6:00. But 5:30 would be probably, if you were to ask me, my, my preference.
Okay. And Catherine?
I mean, I, I agree. My, personally, I'm fairly flexible, so for me, it really just boils down to what's the best timeframe for our applicants and our citizens to attend, and then also, obviously, staff. So 5:30 would work fine for me, I'm fine with 6:00. If everyone was on board for 5:00, that could also work. So I'm open.
Can I ask this? Because I think I heard someone say lag time, when staff is here up until 5:00 down the street, and then they'd start over here. So is that a problem for staff to have that lag time? That would be helpful to know.
Well, we, we do have several staff members that work on that. So for instance, Deana is hourly employee, so then she'll typically take a break at 5:00 and then come back. But, you know, there are expenses associated with her time on salary, so it doesn't matter, and I just stay in the office until 5:30. We do have Steve and sometimes other members that, you know, attend, and so primarily, I mean, it's going to be the two staff members that, you know, would have, you know, potential, you know, time issues or generating overtime and things like that. But, I mean, I can fill my time between 5:00 and 6:00, but...
Well, this was staff's recommendations to start at 5:00.
To be consistent with the city council times.
So that was, that was the reasoning, is to be consistent with city council?
Yes.
So all city meetings start at 5:00?
Right, just to make it easier, you know, because sometimes people get confused or...
Uh huh.
And so just keeping it consistent, that, that was staff's reason.
That was your thinking to, to move it? Okay.
Would Peak and the Parks and Recreation meet here, they meet at 6:00, don't they?
Peak meets at 12:00 to 1:30 and typically go over, so that is, you know, no lunch for anybody, which, you know, sometimes is a challenge. And I don't know when Parks and Recs meet, if they meet in the evening or in the day, but Peak meets...
I've gone to one of the meetings, it was at night.
Yeah, okay, but Peak meets during the day.
Okay, well, I'm just hearing that...
Would we be open to trying 5:30 and see, because we can always move it, right? I mean, I know, I'm not in flavor of...
We would have to have all, all members present to change the bylaws, so, yeah, this is, which is not to say it can't be changed, but it is, it does require everyone to be present.
Unless we change that in the bylaws.
But we're not there yet.
Right.
So as we stand now, so all those in, I'll just call, I guess, a straw vote? Yeah, or a preliminary vote. All those in favor of 5:30, please say aye.
I really have not led to anything. I, yeah.
How about all those in favor of keeping it at 6:00? Aye. I want to keep it at 6:00.
You guys want to keep it at 6:00?
Uh huh. Okay, 5:00? All in favor of 5:00?
I hate to add anything that makes it more confusing, but I did check, and Parks and Recreation meets at 5:00 to my surprise.
Ah.
Sorry for saying that.
Well, that's good information, so...
It's not good information.
So that's a, that's a good reason for me. If everything, everything starts at 5:00, everything starts at 5:00.
How many people in the business committee come to hear Parks and Recreation? Answer, nobody. So I think that's the difference.
So you, you think...
Even though I suggested that was an appropriate thing to find out about, once I found out about it, I'm not sure it's dispositive, because when people come to Parks and Recreation, they're not people who are in the business committee or persons who have nine to five jobs.
So what's your preference then?
5:30 or 6:00.
If you could only choose one, what is your preference? Fire, Friday...
I'd still go for 6:00.
6:00? We have one 6:00, actually, I think we have two 6:00s. Anyone else? I think we have three 6:00s. Anyone else opposed? Anyone opposed to 6:00?
That's fine, yeah. I think, sorry, I don't mean to be like weird about this.
No, it is, we're all, we're trying to juggle all these things.
I just don't want to, I don't want to move it and then have to move it back and everything. And so I think that's where my hesitation is coming from, of being like a strong, my, my personal preference would be 5:30, but I don't want to put it at 5:30 and then have us have to move it again to 6:00. It's not working. This seems to work. I do think sometimes the 6:00 start time leads us, leads us into a later meeting, but, you know, I'm not sure how much the 5:30 would impact that versus impacting other people. The cost consideration is there, but...
Good point.
Yeah, so, okay, so I mean, I'll, I'll throw my vote in as at 5:30, but, but I don't have a, like, if it's 6:00, I'm not going to throw myself on the ground crying.
Well, that's a relief. Okay, Catherine?
I actually, I mean, I, I think we have a strong argument for the 5:00 PM versus the others, but I hear the rest of the commission, that does not work, you know, for this body. So, so I'm, so my vote is 5:00.
Okay. All right.
But I know that I've been...
So it's, to me, for me now, it's down to consistency with all city meetings taking place at 5:00. And, and then also, since we are just going to have the one meeting per month, I certainly don't want these to run too late into the evening, so that, you know, city council has a lot more work on its agenda than we do. So, you know, there's a strong argument for them to start earlier in the evening than for Planning Commission. We typically have, you know, one or two public hearings and so on. And also, it'll be up to staff to, you know, kind of juggle all this work. Should we take a roll, a formal roll call vote on this one detail?
I don't. It, it sounds like we have a majority at this point.
Okay, and you think the majority is now for?
6:00 PM.
6:00? Okay, let's have one more. I want to do a roll call vote. Oh, we have to have a motion, right, for that, for a roll call?
We already have a motion.
Won't, won't we just incorporate it into the revised, into the updates?
Okay, so...
Just another straw, I guess.
Okay. All those in favor of keeping it at 6:00, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we're going to, okay, so our straw poll is 3, 3, 3-1 with, I think, an abstention. So we will keep it at 6:00. But we, the other change, to have a single meeting on the first Tuesday of the month, any objection to that? So, okay. And then the second piece of Article 4A is to strike when either date and replace it with if the meeting date falls on a legal holiday.
I also think, too, we can do this 6:00 PM with the one meeting, and if we start going to consistently really late meetings, I think we could revisit the start time.
Okay.
Do you see what I mean? Like, so let's try the one meeting, let's see how that goes, and if we're finding that this start time is causing challenges with length and lateness, then let's revisit the start time. Does that sound good?
Absolutely.
Let's give a crack at one meeting first and then go for start time. Okay.
Okay. Very good, thank you. That is a tough, I mean, we're trying to, there's all these hypotheticals in our brains, and we're trying to figure out what the best time is, and, and also, none of us really stay up that late, I don't think. So 4B, no further comment or changes on that, that's just cleaning up. So then, 4C, Alyssa, I think you had a comment about that, it normally ends by 10:00 PM. Did you have a change you wanted to make on that?
Since we're keeping the 6:00 for now, I, I think it's fine to keep the 10:00.
Keep it at that, okay, no change. Okay, so then 4D. And then 5 officers, A, no change. B, there is, any comment on 5B?
I think the suggestion was to avoid the problem that happened with the Peak, where they didn't even have bylaws, and then someone left, and so they, they're left in a quandary. So the suggestion made was right after March 1st, it'd be comma, or at any time with the majority of the Planning Commission members, comma, or the first regular meeting after, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just those words added.
I don't know that I'd feel comfortable with a smaller commission making the election prior to city council appointing a new member.
I, I'm sorry, how does that happen?
I don't know.
So for, if I can add, the, the example with Peak is, so our chair has resigned, and so we have a vice chair, but now, so essentially, the vice chair will become the chair, and we don't have a vice chair. So now, and we're down two members. So it's, do we do elections now and, and elect a vice chair? Or it's, so this is something that the city manager and the city's looking into, because, like I said, we, we have two vacancies and the chair's gone. So if it's an elect, if it's the vice chair or the chair, that's where it, I think, becomes problematic. If it's the regular committee or commission members, it's not necessarily an issue, but I think it's when you lose one of the, the presiding officers.
So it wouldn't be dependent upon whatever the city council does. So if the city council fills a position, that wouldn't be dispositive, wouldn't matter as to what happens here. This is when there's a change among us.
And, and if I can add just to one other issue with Peak, so there's been a vacancy for a long period of time for the Broadway representative. My understanding, it's been vacant since before I got here, and we're not getting any bites. So again, do you, do we just want to have a chair and not elect a vice chair? So I, I think there's some complications in there. Like I said, and Peak is kind of a good example. They're a larger committee, I believe they're seven members, but it's, you know, we're going to have problems with quorums if, you know, if there's not regular attendance and things like that. But that's, that's the issue we have with the Peak organization of it right now.
Another consideration, which just popped in my brain, so I don't know if this parallels exactly, but since we're going to one meeting a month, sometimes it has taken us many meetings to get five people to vote on a new chair and vice chair here, with only having like four people or less. Like, I know I'll be out in the beginning of the year, right? So I should be back by the March 1 and everything, that should be fine. But it can really push things back in terms of the voting, so I don't know. Just going to the one meeting a month is what's triggering this thought process for me of like how we need to massage any of that, that language. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, yes, I do. And like I said, we can add special meetings, so if we need to do, you know, an election, we, we can certainly schedule meetings. Like I said, I think my previous jurisdiction, we had one scheduled meeting a month, but we, as needed, which was, most of the time, we had the second meeting as a special meeting and, but again, because we don't want to hold up development, but want to be cognizant of the commission and the staff's time and, you know, all of those other factors.
Okay. Okay.
Can we, can we revisit where we were at with the language change? Cause I think there's multiple things going on here. So I just wanna see.
Okay.
I think, um, Commissioner Smith, you had made the, you had read the language suggestion, the language change?
It was just simply after March first, comma. And then you add the, or at any time with a quorum of the planning commission members. And that's a quorum of the planning commission members present.
Oh, anytime.
Where does it say that all five members have to be present?
Well, I, I think it's unclear because it says by the voting members of the commission.
Yeah.
So does that mean the total commission or does that mean?
That's what we've said in the past.
So, so yeah, if that's the, the interpretation, then that, then that's what that's stating right there. And that was, that was something that I wanted to touch on was to clarify.
If you had a vacancy, you necessarily would have one less member. So you wouldn't have.
Ms. Kendrick, where does it say that all five members have to be present to elect, um?
That was stricken.
It was stricken. Okay, that's, okay, that's where we.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the final draft. So that came.
Seven G.
That was our former, okay.
But, um, but that was a recommendation by the city attorney, uh, basically stating this can cause, cause problems in the future. For example, if there is a vacancy on the PC and officers need to be elected according to this role, rule, they cannot, uh, do that until the position is filled. This is a delay on planning commission business for months. Plus, the remaining members of the planning commission would not be able to amend these bylaws at that point either. And their recommendation was to delete that and fo, and fall back to a majority vote.
Oh, there, okay, now I see where it was stricken. Mm-hmm.
Cause the City Council would never, they would not.
Oh.
Vacancy outside of this cycle.
If there's a vacancy, uh, I mean, for example, I mean, sometimes planning commissioners graduate to City Council members and.
Right.
Vacancy or, or something like that. I mean, there, there still has to be a recruitment process and the interview process, but it, you know, that takes time. And like I said, we didn't have, um, anyone going, we still have no one, uh, applying for the one peak vacancy that's been open for some time now.
I think.
So actually, would it just be fixed then by eliminating the sent, or the parts of the sentence that's subject to seven G of these bylaws?
That's what, that's what was throwing me, too.
Well, the chair or vice shall also be elected for a one-year term by voting members of the commission. So voting members at the first regular meeting on or after March first, or the first regular meeting after the appointment of new planning commissioners. So say, someone leaves mid-year, a new planning commissioner is appointed. What I'm interpreting is we can vote at that time for.
Now, wait a second. She'll be elected for that.
Or could we just say, could we also clarify, just for consistency of term, one-year term by the legal quorum?
I, I would leave that legal, language out. I would just, because what's throwing us off, Article seven G has been modified. Right. Well, it still exists in this version, but it's talking about newly appointed members. So let's, um...
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, so I think that's, uh, now superfluous. We need to strike, uh, the mention of Article seven G.
Oh, I missed that, yeah.
That, then that should read, that should be appropriate without addition of.
One-year term by the voting members of the commission at the first regular meeting on or after March first, or the first regular meeting after the appointment of new planning commissioners. Now, I don't wanna, uh, you know, we should serve a, a one-year term if possible. If, not if, uh, and then suddenly if we get a new composition of the planning commissioners, I don't think that we need to take up necessarily, uh, electing new officers.
What, what if you, say you left, right? You left tomorrow. And then we got a new, but we got a new planning, or I left, right? I'm vice chair.
Right.
So then we would get new planning commissioners to fill that seat. And at that point, the commission could then vote on the new mem, the, the leadership. If it's not a chair, then it doesn't need to happen. But if it was a person in that chair or vice chair position, you would just vote at the next regular meeting.
Rather than, rather than assigning the pro, the chair pro temp?
Yeah. If I may, so in Article five B, that it's referring to seven G, which was deleted. So I think that, uh, I, I would potentially recommend that after the appointment of new commissioners, um... Period. Period. Yeah.
I would add at the end of that, if there is a vacancy, because.
In the, in the chair and vice chair, I think we should specify, not just because you get new planning commissioners, it's if you get a vacancy. Because otherwise you've got, um, you know, D, um, it talks about the process of, of getting a temporary chair in the event that, um, you know, uh, the chair can't be there. You, we have that, that process. We don't have to elect new, um, officers.
Just cause we got a new planning.
Just because we got new.
I think that makes sense. If we just go at the first regular meeting, if the chair, if the chair or vice chair vacancy.
If there's a vacancy in the chair.
In the chair or vice chair position. And then strike subject to the Article seven.
Right. So that's throwing us off. So get rid of that subject. So, or the first, after the appointment of new. March first, or the first regular meeting after the vacancy, not after the appointment of new planning commissioners, after the vacancy of either the chair or the vice chair.
Yes. That was the one.
Because we don't need to go through this process.
If it's not.
If it's not, yeah, right. Okay, then.
I, and then I still think that we, that the language needs to breathe that they are elected by, if the legal quorum. I agree.
Well, we.
Right.
So it's like kind of a gift.
But, but is it, but, but because I think we need to clarify, though, that it's not, that we're not requiring it to be the total commission.
No, I don't, I don't wanna muddy it because we're very clear then in the next section of our, our voting procedures. And, and I, I, I kinda see now how our attorney is directing us. So we, we struck that language from the next, Article seven. Um, the old seven G read, there must be five members present to vote on the election of officers. That's, that's stricken from the new.
Well, it is, but it's still a little bit inconsistent throughout the bylaws.
I, I think leaving voting procedures under Article seven.
Okay.
Only in Article seven, rather than bringing them out every time we talk about voting. It's just, okay, well, we have a vote. Well, how do we do that? We go to Article seven and read how we do.
Okay.
And we were always consistent. We don't have to keep talking about how we vote in each of the other articles that aren't in Article seven.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. And, but I appreciate what you're saying. I, you know, it's very helpful to us to, to have it right there when we're talking about that issue. But as far as bylaws being, you know, clear and consistent, I think it's important just to leave the voting procedures under the article where they are. And I, I think we've done good by, uh, eliminating the reference to Article seven G, cause I was jumping over there. Well, how does that relate? Also, I think we should strike that very last sentence. Vacancies shall be filled in the same member or the regular meeting following the, because we've already put, um, I, I think, after March first. Or the first regular meeting after the vacancy of vice chair or chair.
Yeah.
So let's just strike everything after that. Oh, wait, the chair shall take office at the following meeting. Okay. And then, then the last sentence that starts with vacancy shall be filled, uh, let's strike that because we've already covered it by saying we're only going to do this when we have a vacancy or on the, uh, March first of, of the year. Okay.
So it would be the chair and vice chair shall be elected for a one-year term by the voting members of the commission at the first regular meeting on or after March first, or the first regular meeting after a vacancy for chair or vice chair occurs, the chair shall take office at the following meeting. Right?
How about the officer, uh, the chair shall? The chair and vice chair and chair shall take office at the following meeting. Yeah. Let's just go ahead and, and repeat it. Chair and vice chair shall be elected, then the last sentence, the chair and vice chair shall take office at the following meeting. Okay.
Yes, cause at the meeting you vote at, if you don't have one, you can do the pro temp and you're good to go.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Okay. Great. All right, so then, anything, okay, C, D, E, F. Any other changes here in Article five? Okay, then Article six committees. Uh, my suggestion was to move, uh, that's last sentence under six A to the beginning of, uh, Article six B.
Sorry, can we go back? Actually, I did have another, um, edits to Article five. So, um, with some of the language changes in E and F and using the development technician, um, for, rather than recording section, recording secretary in F, I think they become very redundant and it can be, those two can be combined. So, um, the suggested language change was in Article five F, recording secretary was changed to development technician. And, oh, I guess it was the same above. They were both executive secretary, development technician. They were just like the same, they were very redundant. So the development services real dec, director shall designate a development technician to the commission. And then it lists the, um, responsibilities of the development technician. And then it does it again, and they're slightly different. So unless I'm missing something, I think we could just combine that all up into one section.
I was thinking the same as you. And, um, now that you've described it, I actually feel like we should keep it separate. Only because, um, I do see, like, in E, it kinda seems like a little bit more of a governing oversight versus some of the, um, more clerical roles.
Okay.
But in the future, it would be great, like, if it's not expected to all be on one person.
That was my same logic when I read it. Like, it's, it's, it's one person, but it's two kind of duties.
Two different roles.
Yeah, like, there, one person is taking on both of those, E and F, but I agree with your interpretation that it, it's slightly different. Um, it's, it could, in theory, be two different people.
Right, you could have two development.
Right, we're just small and, yeah, exactly.
All right. So no change other, I just had one, I think there was like an inconsistency in some terms. So I can send that separately. My notes got a little muddled. I'm ready to move on to six.
Okay. So, uh, my suggestion of, uh, combining our description of ad hoc, um, advisory, uh, so making that Article six B. And, um, it, it could be in the future that, uh, a planning commission does want to, um, have a standing committee. Um, and so, and a standing committee is that. It's, it's one that, uh, isn't discharged at the end of a short assignment like our special committee was. Uh, so a standing committee is, um, and a, a standing committee, I believe, can be three people. I'm trying to remember now the definition, but I, it did involve compliance with the Brown Act and, uh, more work, uh, on staff. So they are different. So I think it's important for us to, uh, combine that because we have had, now we've had the precedent of a, a special committee.
I guess I always tend to look towards simplicity. And I've never heard of a standing committee that we've ever had.
We have not.
And, so I wouldn't wanna go down that road if we don't need to.
Well, I don't wanna preclude a, a future, uh, planning commission from appointing that.
And couldn't we, in the future, be able to amend the bylaws if that, if there was a need? So if someone proposes that we have a standing committee, whatever it might be, then we say, well, let's have a bylaw change. And we've got five people, we vote on it.
I agree with you. I think, um, I think eliminating the discussion about standing committees, cause I don't think that we need to have that ability to have three people on a long-term committee be managed with our small commission in our small town. Um, like, I would be more, I, I agree, like, let's just remove, the chair may appoint standing committees and just say, when desirable and necessary, the chair with the approval of the commission, which I do think is reasonable, um, may appoint advisory or ad hoc committees as appropriate and leave it.
And you could reduce it, I suspect, to one sentence instead of two.
Right, that's what I mean. So take those two sentences to just say, when desirable and necessary, the chair with the approval of the commission may appoint advisory or ad hoc committees as appropriate.
So why are you requiring approval of the chair if the, the chair wants a, a special research project, uh, completed and two other members of the commission are willing to do that, a, a short-term thing? Uh, why do we then have to have approval of the rest of the commission?
I don't think we do, but I just know that we did. We did vote on it. So that's the only, it's because of this. So then, yeah, I think that's fine, too.
Hypothetically, if the chair proposed something, but the other members, uh, didn't want to do it, without that language, the chair could say, well, we need to do this anyways, and you're gonna do it.
Well, that, you'd have to have someone who serves on that special committee. And it.
Right.
I don't think it can be the chair because then, I, I guess the chair could be one member of a, a two-member committee. Uh, but then they would just be taking on a little research project for the benefit of the rest of the commission, which is what our, our special committee did. So that, two people that, neither one of which was the chair.
Right.
But they did their research project and then brought that back for everyone's consideration.
I'm personally in favor of having the approval of the commission in there, but I think Carol has something, too.
I, yeah, I was, um, looking online. So California Standing Committee cannot have three members of the Planning Commission because the Planning Commission is a separate body and it is not a standing committee itself. So members cannot be on a standing committee while commissioners be, can be members of City Council, which might have standing committees. There are no laws that restrict how many planning commissioners can be on a City Council committee. So it's talking about the Planning Commission is a body of residence approved by the City Council or Board of Supervisors to advise on land use and development. It is not a standing committee itself. And a standing committee is a permanent committee with legislative duties that is established by the rules of the governing bodies, such as a City Council or Board of Supervisors.
So it sounds like, yeah, a standing committee really is more appropriate for a body like City Council, like County, um...
Yeah, cause peak is a committee. It's not a commission, it's a committee. It's a standing.
It's a committee, yeah. But not typically used by planning commissions, more used by councils and, um, yeah, larger legislative bodies.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so let's just get rid, I, I see the, the logic now. Let's just get rid of the language about, uh, standing committees. It's, it's probably not appropriate for a planning commission anyway. I think this is probably just carried over from City Council or, uh, you know, whatever, uh, bylaws they were using. So let's strike that. Uh, shall appoint, get rid of standing committees, uh, ad hoc, advisory, ad hoc committees as appropriate. And these committees shall be discharged at the end of this, the assignment. So we just have, uh, Article six A. We'll just get rid of Article six B. So what about approval of the planning commission? I mean, it was easy to get, we all wanted the information. Uh, so, um, and I can't really see a chair wanting to have special information brought that doesn't have the general, you know, acceptance by the rest of the commission. So I'm easy on that. So you wanna keep it with, uh, the language with the approval of the commission. So the chair shall appoint with the approval of the commission, uh, advisory or ad hoc committees as appropriate, and they shall be discharged at the end of their assignment. How's that sound?
My preference.
Okay. So we'll leave the approval of the commission. Then we can eliminate the chair, may, so desirable and necessary, the chair with the approval of the, shall appoint advisory or ad hoc committees as appropriate. Advisory or ad hoc committees shall be discharged at the end of their assignment. So just one, one article combined. Okay.
And it's a given that the ad hoc committee can. And it's a given that the Ad Hoc Committee cannot be more than two members?
That's a definition, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, cool.
Okay, now, Article Seven Procedures. So in this version I've got, it's highlighted in yellow. Oh, okay. So now this is our first time we've talked about, I guess, is it in yellow because it mentions Roberts Rules?
I think so.
Yeah, so the city attorney had highlighted that to just bring it to the Planning Commission's attention for discussion.
Okay. So this is our first discussion of Roberts Rules of Order. As I started out, you know, I read through this, this is easily found online. This, actually, it was published by the League of California Cities, and El Dorado County LAFCO posted it. So that's how I got this copy, but we can, we can easily get copies to everyone. Did anyone else take a look at these Rosenberg Rules of Order?
I did.
You did?
I only read the cheat sheet.
Cheat sheet, cheat sheet, cheat sheet? You didn't look at the cheat sheet?
From Carol.
Okay. Yeah, I'm very much in favor of it. Like I said, it's plain language, and it goes through, well, just pretty much how our bylaws are set up. Role of the Chair, establishing a quorum, role of the Chair. And it, throughout, having this organized, clearly stated, is always emphasizing when you, when you should open for a public comment, making it clear to the public what it is, what the subject matter is, the agenda, you know, and what the, what the decision, you know, is or isn't. So I think it would really help us clarify, and the, and the public would know, have a clear understanding of what our work is here. So I am absolutely in favor of adopting it. How do the rest of you feel? You looked at the comparison cheat sheet?
I, I agree, too. When I looked at the guidelines that you have there, it seemed to me that, you know, it's, it would be like a natural transition from the way that the meetings are already run. And so I like the idea of that much more than following a more informal approach, because I think that having some kind of framework like this really helps if we do have a transition of Chair, and also just for everyone to be able to follow.
Right, and as the, the author points out, early on, the Roberts Rules is, I mean, he says it's like 700 pages. I have skimmed it, I've got a copy at home. Oh, my gosh, you know, jumping to what you need to reference in the middle of a meeting is, would be really difficult. This is about seven pages, clearly lined out. So, let's see, I believe it was Mr. Droubisch pointed out, invite a motion. You know, we can specify that we need to have a second for any motion. Oh, here it is, number six. So this goes, I'm sorry that the rest of you don't have a copy. Basic format for an agenda item discussion. So you announce it, the staff gives their presentation, we take public comments. So the fifth step is the Chair should invite a motion. The Chair should announce the name of the member of the body who makes the motion, and the Chair should determine if a member of the body wishes to second the motion and announce the name of the member of the body who seconds the motion. It's normally good practice for the motion to require a second before proceeding, to ensure that it's not just one member of the body who is interested in the particular approach.
I like that. I think then we don't need to amend to talk about a second in our bylaws if it's in Rosenberg's, because I do like the idea of a second, because it kind of gives the vibe of the support around the motion, rather than having a motion and then discussing it, and then, you know what I mean? I feel like you can go a little back and forth. So that being included in Rosenberg's, I don't think we need to make any updates except to include.
It is leaving it up to the discretion of the Chair, though, as to whether or not the motion needs to be seconded.
Right, so it goes on to read.
Which is fine, like, I don't, I think, if she, they can, the common practice.
Just second, Amy, it says, "A second is not an absolute requirement, and the Chair can proceed with consideration of vote on a motion even when there is no second." So it's not an absolute requirement, but you think about how this body functions. So I'm glad you brought it up, Catherine. It's not an absolute requirement in these rules, but when you look at how we operate, that's the way we operate. We, we are looking for consensus, and I can't imagine that we, you know, I don't think that I railroad things through, and I don't think any Chair before me has. They may have opinions, but, you know, and in fact, the Chair should not be the one to make the motion. So it's not like the Chair is, does have certain authorities, but in the way we function, we do have more of that agreement. There's at least one, two people who want to see some progress on the agenda topic. So I don't, I don't see that the, the Chair is going to, you know, be ramrodding something through on this Planning Commission.
I agree with the way it's written, as you've described it. I'm actually okay with the idea of not regularly having a second, only because we always discuss everything anyways. And so we kind of modify motions no matter what.
That's a good point.
But I could see if it's like a contentious topic where maybe most of the Commission is ready to move on, the Chair could call for a second to continue it.
Okay, dependent, context-dependent.
Yeah.
Okay. Good point. Other thoughts about substituting Rosenberg's Rules of Order?
I don't think it much, much difference, because we haven't really been religious about Roberts Rules of Order in the first place. Nobody seemed to want it. So although I haven't read Robinson's, I will study Rosenberg. I'm going to learn it, and I think we all will. If it has enough flexibility, we can live with it.
It seemed to keep formality while not being so rigid.
Okay.
And inappropriate to use by all local jurisdictions.
Right, that's a good point. Many jurisdictions have moved over to Rosenberg's. A lot of Planning Commissions, all sorts of commissions, if you go on the Internet, you'll, you'll see many have adopted that. Okay, so we have that change, which is in keeping with the staff report, described in the staff report. So now we're on Seven B, also highlighted in yellow in this final. "A quorum of at least three Commissioners, which is a majority of five members, must be present before the Commission has legal authority to act. A majority vote of the total quorum is required to pass all motions and resolutions." This is highlighted in yellow. Any discussion about that?
Maybe, I submitted a change on there originally. The last sentence said Commission, and I changed it to Quorum.
Majority vote of the total quorum. Okay, so this is in line with your thinking?
Yeah, because if it was Commission, then we wouldn't be able to pass anything unless there was all five.
So it, changing Commission to Quorum.
Yes.
Unless all, unless all three, or unless the quorum all voted, like, in, because I think, like, you could have a quorum, but if you still needed to have the total Commission, wait, would that work?
No, so basically what I'm saying is, for, if there's a quorum there, that, it referenced a quorum and a Commission, and so they're two different things, because the quorum is the.
And I think we have.
Moved away from having.
We don't have any requirement for all five members to be present for any vote? Did I miss something?
No, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so it was only, okay, so we, that language has been.
That was struck.
Yeah, well, it said, "There must be five members present to vote on the election of officers and to repeal, amend, or add to bylaws," so that was stricken.
Okay. So we have, so now our bylaws read Quorum, okay. Okay, total membership of the quorum, okay.
So then, I guess what I'm reading is if we change this to, "A majority vote of the total quorum is required to pass all motions and resolutions," then we could pass a motion and resolution with two, two positive, or two agreeable votes rather than three.
Yes, that's the majority vote, yeah, if we just, a quorum is three, so two of three, yes. C, no change. D, "To be passed, all motions, resolutions must receive the affirmative votes of a majority vote of the total membership of the quorum."
Same thing, I've suggested replacing Commission with Quorum.
Okay. And then, E, F? So any, any, no other changes, E, F, and then, so G is new?
Well, can we?
Was formerly H.
Sorry, actually. So kind of going back to what we talked about before, did you want to keep all this voting language in the procedures? Or just go down to, because we're defining what the votes are here in a couple different places. So under Seven B, the sentence that we just looked at, and then again, under Seven D, it says the same thing. "To be passed, all motions and resolutions must receive the affirmative votes of a majority vote of the total Members," or.
So you think that D is redundant?
And then if, and then if we're sticking with the idea of just dealing with the voting, you know, what the votes are in Article Eight, maybe we take out that, that last sentence of Article Seven B.
Last sentence of Article Seven.
Majority of vote of the total quorum is required to pass all motions and resolutions, because that's addressed in Article Eight.
Which is the voting, so. Seven is procedures. Some majority, okay.
Yeah, I think. Eliminating the last sentence of B and eliminating D, I think you're right. The B just says, this is what a quorum is, and then voting is clarified in the next one.
Oh, okay, so then we're going to have to change, we've lined out Quorum in Eight A, so I think we should make sure that Quorum gets reinserted down there under Voting, since we're taking it out up here. Okay, so we'll, we'll move that language down to Eight Voting, but.
So reinstate constituting the quorum.
Yeah, so we're defining what a quorum is. And then we're eliminating D completely.
And then that'll, that'll basically address some of what appears to be potentially inconsistent throughout here.
I agree, because it was, there was, like, even replacing Quorum with Commission was, I was like, okay, I'm trying to calculate it in my brain, which is why I suggested the Quorum, because I was like, well, it's not the Commission. So I think eliminating that final sentence and eliminating D takes a lot of the confusion out, and then reinstituting, constituting a quorum in Eight A, and.
Yeah, okay, majorities of the Members, so it's lined out here, but we'll leave it back, the Members constituting a quorum, yes. Okay, so we'll retain that.
That wasn't my suggestion, that was from the.
The red line.
The, the cutting of that out was from the attorney, but it also references the thing that was removed above. So it says, "See comment above." So it talks about the vacancies and things, so I think re-putting that in is fine.
Yeah, so we defined a quorum, we've got our procedures, now we've got our voting. Voting is consent of the quorum, voting sign, okay. Then we had a public comment about Eight. See, I, I'm fine with that language. "In the event of a formal application failing to be either approved or denied by the Commission, the application will be considered denied." That's clear to me.
That's clear to me as well, and I think there's a situation where we choose to continue an item, and the applicant doesn't come back, and it would be considered failed at that point, though we didn't take an action.
In Eight B, it uses the term Recording Secretary.
No.
Or did I?
No, I, that was one of my changes, so.
Sorry, I'm looking at an old, I made the same change.
You're good, yeah, so that one is updated in the one they gave us tonight. It's, that's the only other place that it.
Okay. Considered denied, all right, so now we're on to Article Nine. I'm just going to kind of scan through here, I'm not seeing any changes. Let's see, F, there's some changes. "We're just using Commissioner, Staff, Member, or Audience Member wishes," okay. Please feel free, you know, we are going pretty long on this, but we're going in detail. So if I'm missing something, you have a comment, or you want to go back to that, please feel free. But I'm just going to go through, I'm not seeing any discussion for F. G, H, that's just language. H, I, J, K, and then L, okay, so this is just how we, our procedures. Okay. And then Matters from Commission, okay, and then Adjournment. Okay, now Article Ten. "Order for each specific agenda item. Chair announces next matter. City staff present, you know, recommendations, summary, communication. Chair invites questions, clarifications of staff from Commissioners." Right, Chair calls on applicant, this is just our process.
Oh, I think, is this one of yours?
Where are you?
B three. I had caught that that was lowercase, but elsewhere Staff is uppercase.
Which number, ten?
Oh, ten B three.
Sorry.
Presents, capital S, Staff? Is that what you?
Yeah, just for consistency with other of those edits.
Yeah. Yeah, City Staff, and, well, let's see, City Staff. Yeah, I think you're right, for consistency, Staff, yeah, and then the, in B, we also have capital S, Staff. So you're right. So present, capital S, Staff Recommendations, three, B three. Okay, then we're on to Ten F. Here's a change that we talked about briefly before. "The Commission acts to."
Sorry, really quickly, there's a Staff in B one, ten B one as well.
Ten B one also has lowercase Staff.
Oh, that would be, well, that would be Staff Report, which is, I guess I'm not sure if that's capitalized or not.
Neither of those rose to my attention, so I just wanted to point out if it's there.
Okay.
I don't have any capitalized.
I guess just to check for consistency.
Okay, so, can we move on to Ten F? "Commission acts to close or continue the hearing. Discuss, approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue the item?" So, Amy, I think this was something you brought up earlier tonight.
Yes, I, I keep going back to, I think continue should be an option in there, if that's how we're going to lay out our path.
Either immediately, Planning Commission says we're just going to continue it, or we're going to close it and not take action, or we're going to continue it, or we can go ahead and go through a discussion, and then we can take action. So you, that is important to you. Okay. Alyssa, you've got your mic on?
Yep, I just wanted to clarify with the term hearing, because I think we use it a little bit interchangeably with, like, agenda item, but also as, like, just the entire meeting is a hearing, so it might be worth clarifying in F one, what that's referring to.
Okay.
I think it's the hearing in E that it's referring to.
Public hearing.
Okay, so the, the attorney didn't have any problem with that. So closing the hearing, so we have environmental hearings, we'll go through our standard agenda. Environmental assessments and public hearings, so that's numbered nine.
Public hearings is what, when we advertise an item, a public hearing could be an item that doesn't need to be advertised, but does need to come before the Planning Commission. So we. So we, I have done in the past, separated that between public hearing and public meeting. But, I mean, we are bound by the bylaws on how the agenda looks, but there is a difference between a hearing and a meeting.
Uh-huh. And so we, should we clarify that, close or continue? Should we say public hearing, or i- is it better for us to lay the, the language the way it's written?
We could put, uh, public hearing or public meeting.
Close or continue, public hearing or, public hearing slash public meeting?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's do that in deference to what I'm here. So close or continue, uh, public hearing slash public meeting. Okay. Until a later date, discuss, approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue the item.
And then eliminate the period.
And eliminate that period at the end of F three. And then recommend approval, conditional approval, or denial to city council, depending on what the, the item is. So we, we had that recently, we had to give a recommendation.
Correct.
Okay. All right, everybody comfortable with F one through four? Okay, we'll move on to 11. So 11A, looks like that's just cleaning up some language. 11B, again, just cleaning up, we're in compliance with posting requirements. Development Services Director C. Okay, then we get to 11D. City Attorney, the city placar, or his or her designee shall be the attorney for the planning commission and will attend its meetings upon request. So, right, this has come up before.
Sorry, I, I'm not keeping up.
You know, I'm not saying something I thought was substantive.
No, I just, it's not substantive. It's just minor.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Where are you?
So Article 11A.
A.
So page six, the first, um, the, the first sentence, I think agenda should be capitalized just to be consistent.
Oh, it is.
Is that one of yours?
You're on the attorney one. Go to the one that Carol gave out tonight.
Yeah.
Now, you know what happened is, well, because my notes are on here, so I'm a little bit
But go to, not that one, that one.
You already caught.
So that has been capitalized.
It is. Okay.
You go to the 12 two.
Okay, I will.
No, you're good.
Sorry.
Yep, there you go.
Okay.
Now you can kind of see the difference between what they did and the attorney in your notes. Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then, um, and then in C, okay, you guys already. Okay, and then we're on D, which
Now we're on D.
Okay, which I do have a small edit.
So, and will attend meetings upon request, so upon whose request?
Got it.
So we briefly touched on this before. Yeah, this is a significant
I think we should for tonight incorporate the word staff request and have, sort of clarify if that is appropriate or not, just to update it.
I'm not sure it makes any difference, because using that first language, any person may. I made many requests. I made them orally, on the record, I made them in writing, they were ignored. So what difference does it make? I mean, it's not a problem.
Well, actually, I disagree, because you have made those requests, and so you're either triggering something or you're not. And so I want clarification, whether me saying that, you saying that, whoever says it, that it's not just any person can throw out, I want the attorney here. I think I would prefer it to be clarified.
Specifically, what we had, and the reason this has taken two years, is because of one question, and one question only. It was raised by Commissioner Carter. It had to do with whether a quorum was needed for a particular kind of action. Whether it was a quorum of those present or the full body.
And we did get that answer, but that did have to come through, I remember this now. It did have to come through staff, because again, it's a, an expense that we can't authorize. So staff takes notes in addition to the minutes, and here's our concerns. And so when it does come up to that level that, you know, we're all concerned and we, we want to hear from the attorney, then staff has, you know, that ability to make sure that there's funding available through city council and can get that opinion from the attorney. So I think just simply adding the word staff, attendance meetings upon request of the staff, covers it.
Ask it is because of this. It was one question only. And for two years, the planning director and the city attorney were no more than 20 feet apart. That's a minimum of 25 different days in which that question could have been asked. If that's not simple enough to show that that's not necessarily a credible argument for why it has to be a two-year delay, I asked the city attorney, one of about a half a dozen occasions, when I asked questions of the city attorney, sitting right where Catherine is, and got an answer. So it didn't take two years to get that simple answer. So the reason I would ask for it here is because we were getting this delay that seemed needless. And if we're talking about the expense of staff, that was just one question. And yet what we've done is we've had the city attorney spend a lot of time going through all these suggestions, which is fine. But it's way beyond what was requested two years ago. That's the difference.
So again, to, to bring the city attorney in and the expense, I mean, to, to your eye, you, you had a certain experience, but as far as what the body, the commission wants, you know, when we request that advice from the attorney, you know, I, I don't want us to encumber the city, you know, with all these questions. And, you know, it was something that, it was a question that you had, but I'm not sure that the rest of the commission was dissatisfied. You know, I felt that it was clear what the definition of a quorum was. You know, I read the attorney's opinion, and, you know, to me, the metal, matter was resolved. But that's, you know, that's my experience. You, you had a different experience. And so as a private citizen, you know, you, you're able to do other things. But as a commission, I don't think that we need to, you know, if it raises, it comes up to that level, we can ask staff to take care of it, but I, I think that, that covers us.
Staff, the city, it's the planning director, the previous planning director, who for two years ago had one question. That's the delay. It's one question for two years. So it might have been clear to you. It wasn't clear to the previous staff.
Well, you know, I don't think we should project on to, to the past. Let's, let's look at what we have before us tonight and, you know. Yeah, we can make this clear, and staff hears us and, and can make, you know, if, if this body says, staff, we, you know, we're looking for clarification from the attorney, and, you know, you, you could take care of it. Or you can make sure that we get that answer.
Correct. And I, I do want to add that I've, I have been present when you have asked for the city attorney, Commissioner Smith. In talking with the city manager previously, it needs to be consensus of the planning commission. And I can tell you that I, I talk to her at every city council meeting, because she's already on the clock, and I'm cognizant of that, but I do, I have a list of questions and I try to corner her. But, but we still, you know, we still have to work with the city attorney. But I, I'm very conscientious about the, the budget, and the city attorney's budget was cut, cut for this 25, 26 budget year, so it's, like I said, I can talk with the city, the city manager, but based on discussions we've had in the past, it needs to be a consensus of the planning commission and not just one member.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just insert that, the attorney will attend these meetings upon request by city staff, if necessary. And otherwise, yeah, you, you can come back to us with those answers that we have for questions that they arise, as they arise. Here's another change, Article 11E, let's, it says Roberts Rules. We have previously agreed to go with Rosenberg's, so there's just a slight change there. We'll say Rosenbergs Rules of Order. Provided however there's conflict as between these rules, these rules will not be interpreted to violate any state law. And then 11F is in yellow, the commission by motion passed by a majority of the quorum may suspend or vary the application of the rules regarding any proceedings or to any particular problem before the commission. So again, we have that flexibility to suspend the rules. That's also something that is stated explicitly in the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, that, you know, if something arises and you just can't, you know, see a way through, you can vote to suspend those rules. All right, great work. Going line by line, article by article. Anything, any other comments, any changes that, okay, thank you all for going through the red line versions and picking up all these changes. I think we've, we've captured everything.
Thank you, Chair Keeney, for going through like that.
I'm sorry?
I said, thank you for handling it that way.
You know, we, that, that way we can bring in public comment, everybody's comments. I just didn't want to lose. Yeah, didn't want to lose any of the threads. All right, well, now, I invite someone to make a motion at this time.
Actually, Chair, before you take a motion, I did want to point out on 11F, there is a comment from the city attorney.
I was just going to ask you about that. That's what I was over here searching for.
Yeah, it says, the comment from the city attorney was, F now directly conflicts with the rule above about how all the votes need to meet the majority of the membership.
And I think that's all been eliminated. So everything's by quorum now.
I was going to ask if it would be appropriate to have the final written copy of what we've done tonight to look at for clarity, because if I made a vote, I'll be darned if I know exactly what I'm voting on.
I totally agree with you, and if you could give us a copy without all the strikeouts and things, so it's just like a clean read with your eyes to not follow old stuff, that would be what my preference would be as well.
Make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting with the cleaned up version with our amendments?
Second.
So we have a, a motion to continue this item to the, our next meeting?
January 6th.
January 6th, with a final version showing all of our discussed changes. And, okay, for our consideration. So we have a motion by Alyssa, and the second was from Kirk Smith.
My only two things is if you could make sure that 11F is clarified to be the way it needs to be, Carol. And also, I am due like a week later, so I, I will plan to be here if I can, the, on the 6th. But I don't know, I can't remember now if we need all five for the bylaws. That might hold you up a little bit. I, I don't think, you know, I don't think I'll be
Well, since they're revising to remove that.
Yes.
But it won't be removed by then.
I just wanted to point that out. But I will, I will try my darndest. I will be up here with this kicking baby that's kicking me this whole meeting right now. And so my, my intention and plan would be to be here. I just want to point out, since there is the whole five-member thing, and then only one meeting a month after that, I just want to point that out. Just, yeah. For some reason, I thought we were having another meeting in December, and I could slip this in before that. But being on January 6th, I will do my darndest to be here, and that's my intention. So, but, you know, like I said, nature, nature calls sometimes. So I am due on like the 12th or 13th.
Call a special Zoom meeting, just for this item.
Just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and so now our discussion is that we may not have all five members present on the 6th.
Let's operate under the assumption that I'll be here and I will, and
Well, the reason I bring it up is that, you know, I think it's, we worked really hard, and I'm quite confident that staff has captured, you know, all of our ideas and that, you know, I'm not sure that we need to have an absolute clean copy.
Motion to adopt as amended, and then if Carol finds any updates that she feels are pertinent, then she can bring them back at a later date, when there's five people here.
Making a friendly amendment to the motion?
That's what I'm saying. So would you prefer that we, just like the agenda, right? So if we change the agenda, like, it's fine. So I will, I'll, I'll do that. I'll make a motion to, or, we haven't voted on the other.
We have a motion and a second, so are you offering a friendly amendment to?
We've never had a position for a proxy or, like, from, from the attorney or call in. But, I mean, that procedure is presumably available. I mean, I'm sure when we had COVID and things like that, whether we had those kind of provisions.
It's not, because I remember, so I had my other baby after COVID and asked if I would be able to Zoom in for them, and it is not available. A hybrid, we do not have the mechanism for a hybrid meetings in post-COVID, yeah. Because that was 2023 that I asked that question of Pierre, and that is not an option for us, so it's only in person. But I would like to then, to, for the sake of moving this forward, did you make the motion?
You made the motion and you seconded.
Yes, ask to amend the motion to adopt the bylaws as amended tonight. And then we can revisit them if Carol finds any groundbreaking information on the open questions that we had, which pretty much have all been clarified tonight. So that would be my
Adopt as amended tonight pending
Not even pending, just adopt.
Pending problems identified by city staff? Or just adopt as amended tonight?
Amended tonight, and then if we need to revisit them.
Okay.
Excuse me, then we can do that. What do you think, Alyssa?
So the friendly amendment.
That's fine with me. Am I allowed to second your amendment?
Kirk, you would have to approve the
I'll cross my fingers and hope it works.
So you're both in agreement to the, the friendly amendment to the motion? So the motion is now to adopt the revised bylaws as amended by the planning commission tonight? Okay.
What she said.
And you're in, and you're in.
And so we have a, accepted by the motion maker and accepted by the second.
Okay, great. Does that make sense? Okay.
All right.
A hail Mary there.
Ms. Watkins Howie, would you please call the, oh, any further discussion? Oh, crickets. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratten?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
All right.
Now I can have my baby with five. I'm going to name the baby by law.
Oh, wow. And I thought this should be a quick meeting. What do I get? All right, so that was our planning commission matters, 12.2.1. On our agenda, 12.2.2 is the historic design guidelines. We didn't have any documents in our agenda packet. Are there any comments from those of you who've been working on these? Alyssa has
Just sorry, because I didn't take the holiday into account last week to get the spreadsheet in on time.
Oh, okay.
My bad.
It's all right. But you, you are, you're just going to tell us that you are continuing to?
Yeah, I have no other updates.
Okay. Anyone else have any?
Well, I had submitted a couple of things back in October, and then I wasn't here, and then I failed to resubmit them. So I don't know if you want me to talk about that, or
Since it wasn't, Ms. Kendrick, since it wasn't included in this packet, typically things are reissued with a new agenda packet, so that the public has a chance to see them. Would that be inappropriate?
I would err on the side of caution, and, and I can include those documents in our next meeting in January.
I'm sorry, you said what? Move it out to January when we?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be disappointed to not get your feedback.
I will, I will try and submit to Carol. I know I said I would do it last time, and I just totally blinked on it. I'm really sorry. Anything I have, I'm going to send to Carol. Any work in progress, ideas, outstanding, or whatever, I'm going to send everything I can to you in the next couple of weeks prior to January meeting, so that you have what I had done. And like, like the web, what I'm thinking of that I have is like the website layout of like what I thought the things, so so I will work really hard to clean that up before I have baby bylaw.
And depending on what else is on our agenda, perhaps we can have these documents as part of our agenda packet, so that we could discuss them fully at our next meeting?
Absolutely, and I know we're gonna have, we've got a couple items scheduled in January. Actually, I have both meetings listed currently, it was pending the outcome of the bylaws, but we do have some things coming up, so we'll definitely have some items of substantive.
So since we did adopt the bylaws, we will have just one meeting a month, and that begins as effective this minute, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then our next meeting will be Jan, okay.
So do we need to have a special meeting for the second one?
What I'll do is look at what I have on there, because there's the ADU ordinance, because HCD has said, you know, our, our ADU regulations are severely out of date, and they're, they want a timeline, and so because any changes to the zoning code require 20-day legal ad instead of a 10-day, I was unable to bring it to this meeting, but we'll have that. There's a couple other items, I don't have my notes with me, but I'll look at working on those agendas and seeing what we can move, or if we need to have a special meeting in January for the second.
If there's any items from Amy's workload that don't require us to discuss, or if there's further research needed, or whatever, just you can forward it to me, I can work on things.
Very rough draft, so.
Challenge accepted.
Yes, I'll send it along.
And your GIS map is up, it's, we do...
I think we need to look, did it go?
Did it go live?
Yeah, it's live, we really need to work on that, but it's live.
Yeah, great, I mean, at least people can click on their parcel and see it on there, versus the only two neighborhood maps. I was just thinking about that the other day, and I was like, I wonder if I ever went live, and I never went and looked. But yes, I do feel that I can at least get some title headings to start tackling to both house things under that are on the website and to flush out, that will make it just so much easier to, more accessible for everybody. Okay.
I welcome that.
That's so exciting, congrats. I mean, I know it was the city's work to build it, but to be clear, I did not build the GIS map, I just said, this is awesome, and this is what we need, so yes, yes.
You made it happen.
Okay. No other reports from the staff? Any other issues from the planning commissioners? Well, I think in accordance with the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, I invite one of you to make a motion for us to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, and I'm not gonna require a, oh, wait, we have a second, we have a second. All in favor, oh, further discussion, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Have a good evening, everyone, and happy holidays.